Well, the price of gas gone down to a dollar ninety-nine. Wait for the recording.
You know, it's nice to be home, you don't hear anything.
He doesn't even know what I said.
Obviously, we need the water, so thank you for the waiting, please.
The flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda? Public comment. Is held to three minutes. It's raining out, it's been a long day, just please be nice to one another. Is there any public comment tonight? Being none. Approval of minutes, Kevin?
I move to approve the minutes of the school board meeting August first and August seventeen twenty twenty-three, barring any errors or omissions.
I did.
Any discussion? All in favor? Do you roll warrants, please?
Motion to uh move to direct the superintendent to schools of schools to authorize payment to the by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in the school payroll warrant, P R twenty-four dash four, in the amount of one hundred and three thousand seven hundred thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents. And P R twenty-four dash four D, in the amount of sixty-two thousand nine hundred forty-one dollars on August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. P R two-four dash five, in the amount of a hundred and six thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and nineteen cents. And P R twenty-four dash five D, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents. P R twenty-four dash sixty, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-two dollars and eighteen cents. And Maine Pers twenty-four dash one, in the amount of twenty-nine thousand six hundred thirty-three dollars and forty-seven cents. And Maine Pers twenty-four dash two, in the amount of six thousand five hundred ninety-five dollars and four cents on September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
New discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Do you have one more?
I'd like him. Go ahead, Tom. Okay, I'd like to move to direct the superintendent of schools to authorize payment of the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in the school payable warrant, A P twenty-three dash forty-nine, in the amount of two two thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars. F Y twenty twenty-three, A P twenty-four dash five, in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirteen cents. And A P twenty-four dash six, in the amount of thirty-one thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents. Uh F Y twenty-four on August seventeen, twenty twenty-three. S A twenty-four dash two, in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars and five cents, student accounts. Uh A P twenty-three dash fifty, in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents, F Y twenty-three. And A P twenty-four seven, in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and forty-seven cents. F Y twenty-four on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. S A twenty-four dash three, in the amount of three hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-two cents, student accounts. A P twenty-three fifty-one, in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. F Y twenty-three and A P twenty-four dash eight, in the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. F Y twenty-four on September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Any discussion?
Is he was still getting twenty-three? Just we had twenty-three bills, how long does that, you think that'll go on?
Um, they should be wrapping up fairly quickly. Just gonna be that a holdover of bills that come in and the variety from the summer, so.
Oh, getting closer to knowing. Do we have a surplus, or do we have a?
We're at our best, I will know for sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Notification of new hires?
Uh notification new hires, Robert Albert was hired as a food service assistant on nine one twenty-three at step zero. At an hourly rate of fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents, six hours per day, a hundred and seventy-eight days per year, per year. Diane Pelletier was hired as food service assistant to begin on nine eighteen twenty-three. At a step three, at an hourly rate of fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents, six hours per day, a hundred and seventy-eight days per year. Prorated to start to the start date.
The steps, step zero and step three, are still a minimum wage?
I was gonna say, that's, that's what I was gonna bring up as well, um just in case that happens to be an error. Because I can't imagine that step zero and step three is the same, so we may have to more due information on the correction.
Dr. Lane, that, that is correct.
It is correct, thank you, Kim, okay, all right, I questioned the same thing. At this point, say that again.
It's up until night at this point.
Is it, okay.
Go back to the negotiations this year on that subject.
All right, negotiations this year, okay?
Yeah.
All right, uh good topic, Ben, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Number nine?
Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
To approve putting Jolene Maynard, Special Agent Administrator, on administrative contract with no change in salary.
Second.
New discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay. See if the board will approve a delegate to the fall conference.
Like to nominate Warren Stewart?
I would like to nominate Kevin Libby.
I second that.
Me too.
You can see the nomination.
Second, I'd like to talk before we vote. I think it's ill-advised to take someone who's been on the school board for nine months and send them as a representative of Sterns High School. Sterns School Department down there, has never been there, so, but if you feel that's a good decision, I most certainly would do it.
Let, let me answer. I can't think of a better way to, to, to learn to do this, and you're not going anywhere but your own house. Unless you come to the school, because this is all done on a Saturday morning, starting at nine fifteen.
Sounds like a plan.
And the last time I did it, it lasted a lot to two thirty. And oh, but it's a law.
And, and as board members, we get that packet to tell what's in there, so if we've got any suggestions, we'll call, yeah, we'd let you know.
If you vote on any, any uh for whole resolutions, they're gonna pull, so you'll have, how we're gonna.
And you have, you already have the resolutions that's.
But you'll see, you'll see how.
Okay.
Hey, Julie did it last time, didn't she?
She did.
Sounds good.
So what you really need to be able to do is to.
Get on Zoom.
Uh yeah, go in and out of Zoom to be able to vote and have, you know, a comfortable seat, so you can sit there from nine to noon.
I have coffee.
There you go, there you go.
And you'll, you'll learn how important a word means.
Sometimes, yeah.
Oh, no, no, I'm not.
So we do.
I've done that for like.
We do what we're voting on before we.
Yes.
For, so I'll know how we're here. That, that seems like a great idea.
You, you will know how, how the Milnoket schools just don't want the delegate to vote.
Okay, that's good.
Be going in. Yep. And I want you to all change once you get there. Any more discussion?
I make a motion to approve Kevin Libby as a fall conference delegate.
Second.
All in favor? Yeah, five all. Thank you for voting.
We need, we need to have a backup in case something happens.
Oh.
Don't we usually do that?
We usually do, yeah.
I nominate Kevin Greger.
Well, I second that.
I just did all these things.
Seconded by Lawrence, we would, so do we have to take a?
I've, I've doing the same thing you are trying to come up with a paperwork.
I'm pretty sure that's not the date I'm going on.
I'll double check him, Lawrence Stewart.
All, all, all in favor? What we doing, guy?
I, I put another name forward, didn't I?
I thought you did.
I respectfully decline.
We didn't get them ceased.
I'm sorry, I'm watching the decision nomination.
Second.
And, and I thank you, Kevin, for making happy both Kevin's, but, oh, thank you.
Actions over there.
Any more discussion? All in, everybody? Four, one extension, five.
Okay, no, I'm a no.
You're a no? Four, two, one, sorry, majority.
I think that's the weekend, Mary, when I go on cruise.
That's good.
I'll let you know, though.
Did you get a laptop with you?
Yes, I could, couldn't I?
I could just put it on there and not screw anything, yes.
But I know, I know if something happens, you're there, Kevin.
All right, moving on.
Okay, first reading of the policy.
One. Here. Oh, hey, you did that, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
I think Kevin, G is gonna be the ultimate.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Yep, first.
I'll make the motion. And wait a minute, hold on. Moving on. First policy, first reading of policy revision.
I move to approve the first reading of the following, following revised policies. E F D school lunch charging policy. I J N D B, student computer and internet use and internet safety. I J N D B dash R, student computer and internet use rule. And I J N D B dash E, student computer internet use acknowledgement forms.
Second. Any discussion? Can I ask a question? How, what do we do when we went out to computers and they, they get broke? Yeah, accidentally, I assume. And the student can't afford to fix them? Do, are they still allowed to use a computer, or?
They're maybe in the circle of states, that, you know, if it was truly an accident, or if it was something that was not an accident. Um, yeah, I, uh Cody and I were actually just coming from a meeting before this, and he's got eleven computers with parts and pieces between screens and keyboards, so he's found access to some parts and is gonna be able to beat some of those, um repairs himself, and um I don't know how often it happens during this meeting.
It's usually not very often, because parents, um parents don't sign off on the usage form. Um, if they're afraid that their student is going to um not be responsible with the device, yeah.
I know one time, like we, and this would be years ago, we said like some kind of an insurance deal. That could be taken out on, if you remember that, oh, that could be taken out on in case something happened. I don't know what these thought today as to what they used to thought.
A lot of school systems have thought to using the insurance policy, because there were a lot of strings connected. Had to be an M L T I device, or it had to be the Apple device with Apple Works as the, as the um insurance policy. So there were a lot of strings that had been attached. I know the system I just left, they um opted not to have the insurance anymore. Um, hoping to do actually what we're doing here, which is parts and pieces. I will say that if there was something that was truly intentional to destroy a computer, we would have some conversations and see where it goes.
And I would think right, you're right.
Right.
I think that, that would only be right. Okay, any other discussion?
Maybe we're all three on.
They were, we had a policy committee, a meeting a couple of weeks ago, went through each of these. Um, they looked at what M S N A was recommending. Um, the lunch policy was initiated by Mia, and the computer policies were initiated by Cody. Um, for him, he actually needs this for, um, is it M L T I?
Yeah, the, the consortium membership for Network Main, which is part of M L T I, yes.
So actually, upon this discussion that we're having tonight, that will be popped in the mail tomorrow. So it was, these were, as you know, we're um coming out of, out of our rotation, because we're going down through the alphabet. So these are clearly out of rotation, and that's the reason why for those two policies.
Can we technically, for to maintain SIPA compliance is why we had to update these as quickly as we did. We needed to update to be, to remain compliant with the, the SIPAs and children's internet protection actually.
Do we need? Because this is just the first reading, so they're not all seeing that, right? So that, it doesn't matter, as long as we've had the process, right? Okay.
Yep, exactly.
Now, the lunch charging policy, that only pertains to like today, it would be, yeah, Alacar, thank you, I can think of it.
On a car or something.
Because everything else is all people by the street, right?
So that was, it had some confusing language that no longer aligns with what's currently happening in our program, so we wanted to update that to reflect the changes.
Yeah, so it hasn't changed, that's one of the things we talked about at our policy meeting. It hasn't changed the accessibility of three breakfasts and lunch program to any student. Um, it's just that extra.
Yep.
Yep.
Makes sense. Thank you. Anybody else got questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
So while Warren writing with your permission, I'd say that, um, the room is filled with the um department leaders. We had our first district admin team meeting today. And uh it seems like most people had a good summer and are ready to go with lots of new ideas and enthusiasm for um this school year. So as the year goes on, just like at the end of last year, these folks will do a report for you and be present to present a couple of the things that are in the report, but then they also um share with you just a couple of things that are not going forward. We understand you all have read, so I don't want them to necessarily go down through reading this, but if there's something they want to highlight, that's what they'll be doing, so that we're not, um, here, great lengths of time. And we do welcome um Grayson back, and she's now a senior this year, so she sits on this side. And I think Miss Stevie may be announcing a junior, but we'll get to that when it's her turn. Nick is at a game tonight, so he is not here. Um, but I wanted to just publicly say, this is a great team, we had a great meeting this morning, and it was a, it's nice that they're all here to share good things happening.
Thank you.
I see Grayson is also president of the clubs.
Congratulations. I see that, too. So.
We're so offended, sorry.
Yes, Grayson, up to you.
So, not a whole lot to happen in the short time. I just, um, two obvious seasons started up again. Uh, we went on second and went to play Herman on their new turf field, which was really nice. Uh, we were defeated three-two. Um, the seventh annual Abby Cave this game happened on the sixth, which is funny, because she was number six.
Oh.
Um, we played Fox Draft Academy and we lost one, zero. And, and uh the start of the football season happened and I made this report a bit ago, but last Friday, uh two Fridays ago, they played Bucks four, uh they were defeated like thirty-three, twelve, I believe. Um, seniors, we had a senior sunrise this year, which is, I think, the first time Sterns had done it. So we woke up at like five o'clock and we went to the airport and over half the class went, um, and watched the sunrise together, which was really fun. Um, there's gonna be a section in the yearbook with the pictures from it. Um, and the class officers were elected, uh treasurer is Brady Gerst, secretary is Kylo Welch. Uh, vice president is uh Natalie McHuen, that was Katie. Um, and I'm a class president.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mia?
You get to go first. You won last year when you wasn't first, and now?
Never mind for happy. It's nice to be back, um, we had a great summer food service program. Uh, we had a, I would say, significant increase in the meals that we did serve. An increase of one thousand seven hundred and two meals over the summer in the tri-tipple area. Um, in huge part to collaborating with our local rec department and the, the uh Milnoket Memorial Library. We really could not be as successful without them, and really looking forward to um building and adding on to that program this summer, now that we've had it under my belt, um. Super excited to welcome aboard our new staff, Bob Albert and Diane Pelletier. Um, we also have a, a trainee from E M D C, one of the women in the kitchen, she worked with us through uh the summer as well, to be getting some onsite job training, she's been a great benefit to our program. Let's see. Let's see, uh we got a substantial grant this year, um totally one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and eighty-eight cents, um and that's really to kind of reinvent the wheel here as far as our school nutrition program goes. So, um, really looking to provide more nutritious meals to our students, more scratch cooking. Uh, in this grant, we'll provide um loads and loads of technical assistance and training and oversight to make sure we're making decisions for our program that will continue to benefit, benefit um the children of our community in the long term, you know, if we do it correctly, it can last forever, hopefully, um. So that's really all I have to say to them.
Any questions?
I had a quick question.
Sure.
How do they get the meals to East Milnoket? Because I used to deliver one day a week, and I haven't been asked last couple of years.
It's likely to ask.
I know, um, I know some East Milnoket children participate in the library in the summer. Would that, would that be one way to the?
The red takes them.
That would be, uh, the recreation department does do the deliveries for East, um in that way, and they also deliver over here to the site at the rec complex here. Um, next year, I'm looking to branch out a little bit, so the East Milnoket Library would be a great um connection point. And I know there's a few other organizations and camps ongoing through the summer that I picked up on this summer, but it kind of too late in the game to bring them onboard, so.
Well, this, this is year twenty-one or year twenty-two of that program. Um, I just want to thank you for continuing. You know, when we started that program, Kevin, you're gonna, you know. We didn't know, we didn't have the need that we do today. The, the need today is, is far more than it was then. So I think that's great, and thank you very much. Could we get a, a rundown of how many meals for each community? Do you have that? We used to get them, okay, thank you.
And I appreciate the fact of going back to scratch cooking, actually, scratch cooking, you know.
Yeah.
I, I appreciate that, I think that's gonna be a long battle for the students.
Yeah, we've got some work to do, um, kind of re-equipping our kitchens, uh to go back to that model, because it's been a few decades since um we were scratch cooking.
Yeah.
I agree. This Maynard.
All right, well, I got my first year under my belt. So I'm, I'm feeling a little more confident going into the school year. Uh, we've done a lot of changes, organizing, things like that. Um, but I do want to uh say that Jen Jandro, this summer, um brought in a few of her students, one who did a lot of shredding for me, um and worked on social skills with them, they also helped do the emergency kits um and stuff for our emergency plan. And um she did all of her own free time, she didn't ask to get paid or anything like that. And um the love of her children is that she works with is great to uh share. We are starting with a hundred and fifteen special ed kids, um as of the September first, that has changed a little bit. Um, because we still have students coming in, students going out, um and twenty-six five oh four students. So, um definite needs, needs there, but meetings for September are all scheduled, so we're right on the path where we should be. Any questions?
Is that five oh four number down?
Yes, um, and you know, sometimes we have students that go from I E Ps to five oh fours, which means they're being dismissed from special ed. Sometimes we have five oh four students that go the other way, so. Any other questions?
I, I, I had the opportunity of meeting the student who came in every morning and did the shredding with Jen, a very
focused.
Very upbeat person, very focused, yes, yeah. I, I enjoy meeting that person every morning, it was, it was nice.
Yeah, made my job a lot easier when I, when I was working here this summer, it's like, oh, I get to see someone, and I shine a face.
Yeah, very, 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 very happy to be here.
Jolene, one quick question.
Yeah.
Uh, that number of I E Ps, one fifteen, give or take.
Yes.
Uh, how's that compare with the beginning of last year?
We're right around the same, and we have already had referrals in flowing in, so I expect that number to increase unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Glenn?
Yes. The elderly class? Elderly class, yes. Uh, since uh August fifteenth, we have opened and closed sixty-three tickets to the technology department. Which is an average of two point six six tickets per work, actually, it's a little higher than that, because I calculated it at fifty-nine, but anyways. Um, the ticket system has worked beautifully and magically for me to manage all the various needs and, and keep them organized and just, I think there's been a a major reduction in wait times for people that need things repaired and fixed um immediately, and we're still training some people on how to use it, um, you know, I'm putting in tickets just to keep records if it's something, so I've found that it's, it's, it's working well and convenient, I can, I can always go back and look at what I did here, so it helps for records, it helps to track, you know, all the different things that are going, and maybe at some point, I can start looking and then taking some of that data and use it to look forward to maybe do some preventative maintenance um and things like that, so it might help even further improve the workflow. Uh, because it's all about the teachers not having to wait. Uh because it's all about the teachers not having to wait on. Something for technology, it's, it's, it's designed to make everything easier and it needs to run that way. So that, that is the ultimate goal with uh in-class from technology. Um we spent a lot of time this summer working on the fiber conversion project with First Flight and Consolidated. It's been one of those uh projects that every time we. We have a nice, long two or three hour meeting session or or workday that we discover all the things we have to start doing on the next session that we have to then schedule, and so. There's been a lot of time invested in that, but it's going to be really good, it's gonna save us a good amount of money, um on Lou's budget and on my budget. Um and we're almost to the very tail end of it, so shortly we'll have some more, I'll have some more for my next reports, some more data to uh. Provide you guys on, on how this is gonna benefit us and what is gonna save us, but it's in the thousands. Um for my budget that uh we've, we made an effect off of this infrastructure change. Um the civil compliance, I I mentioned earlier, that was a big one for our network main consortium, which is how we get our internet. And filtering technology provided from the state of Maine, uh we have to maintain compliance within that, um and we now with this new updated policy. Uh we'll keep our maintained um consortium enrollment with that, so that's a good one too. Uh and the last thing is uh last, oh, it was August, early September, I applied for cybersecurity grant. To replace all of our network switches, uh we just this week discovered that we had been approved for the fifty thousand dollars we need. To execute that project, so all new network switches, the the jam switches, I think we're here. Were they installed by uh, what was the gentleman before? They're, they're old and they're um. They're far more than what we need, so these new ones, the reason we're bringing them in is because we're gonna be able to monitor them. Um with the system that we're already running our wifi along, uh it's increased visibility, increased monitoring. And it eases the, the ease of use, it lightens the ease of use with it, because right now the Juniper's, you have to have a network engineering degree to be able to. Actually go in and access them via DOS prompts and command prompts. Um these are gonna have a user-friendly interface, which make it easier for us to manage them ourselves and not have to rely on the company. That installed the Juniper's for us if we need to do maintenance, so it puts a lot more of the control and the power of them in our hands. Well, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah, did you need something?
Um I just wanted to make sure. It's not working on my end, so you'll just have to end the report, the meeting from here.
All right. Johnny can help us. All right, thank you.
Uh Louis?
Right. So it was a busy summer at both schools, for, for the custodial staff, um. You can imagine over two hundred thousand square feet of workspace between the two buildings and think about every single room being emptied. And every floor being scrubbed and stripped and waxed, you know, that's a monumental undertaking for five people between two giant buildings. And that's when in summertime, most people try to take their vacations and whatnot, so we do cram. A tremendous amount of work into a short period of time. Um and they work hard. Um I had a rock star group of summer cleaners this year, Amanda uh Welch and. Karen Wyman, Jessica Burke and Sandy uh Booker, the library, they came in and cleaned. This building primarily, um without them, I couldn't do it. Um they uh they provide a very valuable service, they work great together and they, they really. Keep things looking. How we like to have them look, uh so my hats off to them. Uh we had two painters, T J Brown and Christie Hayes, uh started. First project they started this summer was painting the gym, uh like staff with a small room and uh it had been over twenty plus years that the gym. And been painted and I've got the before and the after pictures, four pictures, the different colors on the walls and. Uh quite a difference, quite, quite up brightening and uh a much needed uh. Much needed upgrade for that, we did the gym lobby, they, DJ spent hours scraping down our exterior doors. Uh the heat gun and getting them down to the metal again so we could recoat them, um you know, we've got some, it's been. I figure it's been about eleven years since we had painters, you know, we used to have a crew of. Seven or eight painters and, you know, I can see why, because two painters have got a lot of work done, but we only scratched the surface this summer. Mia's crew did a great job in cafeteria painting down there, that was certainly a big help, it brightened up that space, they did a fantastic job. I'm pretty fussy about painting, so uh I was very pleased with, with the work they had done as well. And as you probably saw on the football field, Mr. McGuinness and I, eleventh hour, spent the last few days just before the last football game, getting the. Our green law sign on the top of the scoreboard, which was no small challenge, uh and the rock was delivered the night before the. The big game, so we got that planted in the ground and the new plaque mounted a few hours before the game, so that's another good. Project to have off the list at the last minute, um. As for summer projects, obviously the parking lot was a huge one, um. Didn't know whether that was gonna get completed or not, given the weather this summer, it was drawn out due to rain. Um but July saw the completion of that a few weeks ago, right as school started. Saw Granite Street get the repairs that it needed over there, timing was uh not perfect by any means, but they were back in town and. We got it done, we made some arrangements and altered some busing and whatnot, but. You got a strike while the iron's hot and uh. So we got done what we are gonna do over there, we've got about another week or so to wait um until that cures before we can get the lines all put down. So that will be next with that. The new heating upgrades, converting everything to digital, which is the last of the, the uh conversion, that has been going on since school ended last. Last June and uh Cory's pretty much, everything is done at this point, with the exception of the programming, so it's all gonna. All the computer, all the hardware is installed, all the valves and everything, so. Uh we've got another gentleman coming in another week or so to do all of the programming and adding that into our building management system, so. We will have, again, it allows us energy savings, turning off the air compressors and stuff that. Equipment that we had to run because we weren't a percent digital, so uh we'll see some energy savings through that for sure um in the coming year. Which is great because our electric bill doesn't seem to ever be going down, um. And elevator modifications were started uh in August, um due to still delay in parts. Um but that was started about a month ago and they just this morning completed the first elevator. Um which is the cafeteria elevator, so Otis completed their end, um. Pretty impressive what they, what that all entails, it is, it is a. I, I knew what it entailed and I'm still impressed by all the work they did, I mean, it is virtually a brand new. With the exception of the car you ride in, everything is brand new, so uh. Bringing everything up to code and compliance is a monumental task aside from the, the project. Uh so we are still working on a few things with that elevator, uh fire. Uh alarm and all of that has to still be installed before it can be put into service, but I'm hoping within the next, the electrician's coming tomorrow to finish up his things on that elevator. Um so I'm hoping within another two weeks max, we can put that elevator back into service. Work was started on the other one today. Expect another month uh for that one uh to be rebuilt. And you know, we should be, we should be good to go, it's an inconvenience, it's the school year during the school year, not summer, but. Again, it's, it's still a parts availability thing, and like these, you know, these guys said, elevator parts are like airplane parts. There's nothing you buy off the shelf, it's all stuff that's manufactured very specifically. Um for what it is, so it's, we're lucky, we're lucky they're here and we're lucky we got them, we're lucky we're getting the work done. Uh it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of cost savings in the future, not having continual repairs on, on the elevators as we faced for the last. Or that I've been doing this. Um the Sterns' fire panel was another big project we had going on this summer. Uh replacing all of the devices in the main fire panel in this building, uh Granite Street we did two summers ago. This one, um. Again, bringing things up to code and compliance, we are about ninety percent done on this project. Um like I said, we still have to add the elevators, uh we have to have voice evacuation for the auditorium and the gyms added to the system, um. Some of that, we're still waiting on some more parts uh to be delivered before they can co- complete the install, but it is a. Hundred percent functional system right now, we had our first fire drill the other day. And everything worked great, so we are nearly done with that, um. And as Cody mentioned, the first light project, the switching all of our phone, basically the switching of our phone lines from the old wires. To fiber optic, um you know, and it's kind of a preventative. Type thing and getting up with the times, Granite Street last year, we lost phone lines continually. Because the wires in that part of town were degraded to the point where we struggled to keep up. An active phone line, and so. Part of, part of doing this was to upgrade everything to fiber optic and be up with the times, and I will tell you, I have done. Nearly three million dollars worth of boiler projects and heating projects and electronics projects, I have never encountered anything. Like this, I, I, the amount of meetings and, and networking and.
Coordination.
I mean, i- it coordination, it's like coordinating an army of. And you're installing something that's completely virtual, you, there's nothing you can put your finger on, there's no wire you plug in anymore, there's some fiber optic cables, but. Uh i- i- it's beyond anything that I, and I, I am shocked to this day that it all works. But it does, and it seems to be working uh uh effectively, and there will be more to come, but it will be a cost savings into the future, and it was definitely a joint effort. On our part to.
We discussed ahead of time, it worked out well, I was gonna take the credit, if it failed, it's gonna.
Right. But it is a huge, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we do behind the scenes, that i- it is, I, I've lost sleep over this. Um nobody will ever know, and it means nothing to most people, but it's a major deal, and it takes a lot of our time. Um but anyway. We saw a lot of ongoing things as well, um. Said, it's been a busy summer, it's been a busy, busy start to the school year, and that will continue. Till the snow flies and then we'll be busy moving snow, so, no rest for the wicked. Any questions?
I, I have one.
Yes.
The elevator that's been restored.
Yes.
To put it bluntly, the guts have been taken out of it and everything is brand new.
Everything.
So no more problems with the panels being soldered together and offwired.
Nope, he told me today, he has one el- one other elevator of that same, and that's our, that was our new elevator, he said, there's only one other left in state operating right now that is same as that one. So that's how, that tells you, I mean, thank the good Lord, we got the funds to be able to do it, because. It died, number one, but oh yeah, no choice, um but yeah, then one other left in state that was like ours. So yeah, everything, literally every button, every wa- as I say. Definitely seen what they've done, I mean, it is, the parts and pieces are a mine, but the wiring harnesses with. Five hundred wires that are color coded, that they are literally wiring one by one by one, it's, it's impressive.
Yeah.
I may have missed this, Louis. We were gonna lock in oil in the summer, did we lock?
We did, back just before school ended.
I remember hearing that.
Yeah, I can't tell you right off the top of my head, it was less than the prior year.
Okay. Did we uh?
Yeah.
A month ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, did, we didn't have no penalty for the amount of people we bought?
No, we were in within a hundred percent.
Yep. Thanks for Paul.
Yeah, thanks for Paul when we ended the sun.
And the floors, the thing in your face when you come in looks great.
Yeah, they shine nicely and try to keep them that way throughout the year.
Even the holes over the granite street when you walk in their building.
Yeah, yes.
Really bright.
Yeah, we've got a lot of things still left to do, I, you know, I real corner I look at, I see, but, you know, we got time.
It looks, it looks very nice. Ms. Mary?
We've had a great start to the year, uh we had a really good turnout for open house, it was great to start meeting some of the family and some of the kids that were still learning names. Um Sean and I have had a very sharp learning curve, but we've had some great support in the. Office, uh Corinne and K D D have been marvelous at helping us kind of figure out what we need to figure out and. Because we're in the right direction, we're both kind of feeling like we're getting a rhythm and we're working very well together, so, but a great start to the year. Really positive that the staff over there's been wonderful supportive for us, we haven't had any pain issues, so. It's a good start. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Ms. Bebe?
Sure.
So we've had a really great start to the school year as well, a couple of things that I, I wanted to highlight for you. Is that we have made a lot of changes this year. Grayson's nodding, um so we changed the schedule. We shortened classes by a few minutes so that we have an extra block of time in the middle of the school day, we're calling that our Sterns' time. We are using that for our students who need additional supports. So they're able to go to whatever teacher they may need help with, or they may need to make up work with. They may need to um go over another lesson that was particularly challenging. And then on top of that, during that time, students who are. Right where they need to be as far as their grades go, um their attendance goes. And their work goes, we have a lot of different enrichment activities that we've started this year, so we have. For example, Cody Clayton is doing a maker space where they're looking at three D printers and um.
Laser engraving.
Programming and laser engraving and. Um Laura Dwyer, our gifted and talented teacher, is going to do some different things with an. Introduction to different programs she has, such as mock trial, but she's going to do debate and maybe some journalism. Um so those activities can change from day to day, there'll be um opportunities for kids to go into the gym. And do physical activities, into the weight room to do lifting, those things are supervised, um. There's a writing lab that the English teachers will be kind of swapping off on, so. In other words, if a student needs some additional supports and help, they'll be able to go to that teacher, the other teacher will be able to do some. Um more writing intensive classes with, with students who are interested in improving their writing skills. So we have a lot of different opportunities for the students, and what we're looking to do is to better support our students, um. Students who need challenges, need that enrichment, will have that, students who. It's a high school, so we have a lot of students who have after school and weekend jobs. And they have a hard time sometimes staying after school for those additional supports that they may need. Um in order to do well in their classes, so we're, we're trying to cover both sides of that with the Sterns' time. We've also um added back, we had this years ago, but we've added back the advisor advisee program. So homeroom teachers, once a week, will meet with all of their homeroom students. They'll go over grades, they'll go over attendance, they'll ask what supports they need and where they should be, um so. We're doing a, we're, we're making a lot of changes this year, we have made a lot of changes this year, but it's all to better support the education of our students. Um I also wanted to let the board know that we are attending a college fair at U M O. Um on Thursday, we do that pretty much every year, we have mostly juniors attending because a lot of the seniors went last year. Um I think we have close to, I think we have nineteen students that will be attending. But then we have a college tour in October that will last two days, that will travel to Southern Maine, um. The. The itinerary has not been completely finalized. Um but we'll be visiting all kinds of colleges on the way down, we will spend the night, and then we will visit some other colleges on the way back. So that way, students um who may be interested in a particular school can actually see that school. Um so we're visiting some of the um, the community schools, the um. Like E M C C, um the Central Maine. Community College, we're visiting like Colby and some other, we've got a whole list, so we have a half two days for that. That is being covered by our Melmac brand. So the entire, the entirety of it is funded by our Melmac brand. Um. Students who have, we have an application process, so students who have already applied. Um that we've spoken to are really excited to get out and see so many different schools because. They need to see a school they had not thought about, and when they see it, they, they'll decide that. Maybe this is my place and this is where I'd like to go. Any questions?
I had one question, not about your report, but and one of the means we had talked about. Setting up half one semester courses. Uh like half year courses, that's still something we're looking at or is it way down the road?
For college credit?
No, no, for um for graduation. So we had talked about, so to think, wouldn't it feel like the tenth grade is going.
Right.
To region, um for that class and stuff, we've talked about some ways for people to get enough credits so that they can graduate.
Right, right.
I didn't know if there's been any movement on that.
Great, I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I think Nick's the one that talked about it at one of our meetings, maybe it was a dropout committee.
Yeah, that's what I'm kind of thinking too, was it some of those at risk fits?
Yeah.
Okay, the dropout committee hasn't set a date yet, um but we will do that handling so that we've got that. Probably maybe first or second week of October. You you need a Friday, right?
Friday's best.
I'll make notes so that I hit that schedule.
Any other questions?
Just a quick one, um Beth, we talked about uh like an applied algebra course this year, has that started?
Yes, yes, it has.
Good, good, thank you, okay.
Any other questions? We're really excited. Staff uh is doing tremendous amount of work to make these changes happen, but again, it's all in the best interest of our students.
Thank you.
All right, so everybody before me has told you how we've been going along, all good stuff, right, from all departments, we talked about this morning. The fact that when if you happen to be on a cruise vacation in Bangor or wherever and somebody says what do you do and you say I'm I'm, you know, in education. Their first thought is, oh, you're a teacher, and we're like, no, there's so many components and you've heard of all of those components today. Um about what actually makes the school happen. Um so that said, I can kind of echo a couple of things, like this was my first beginning. Here in at Sterns and at Granite Street and I felt like it was very positive, very energizing. Um we did a few different things than perhaps they've done before, had a wonderful um guest speaker, I. I did a survey, um that appears somewhere, had a survey from the staff that attended. So that we can see that our time was well spent and if our time wasn't well spent, what we should be doing on another year. Um so everything from breakfast the first day, um whether or not there were options, whether or not people um enjoyed or wanted to have that. Right down to, do you think your time was well spent with um updates? Um did you have a a enough space or time for union um meetings or for special presentations, what did you think of the potluck? Um like the whole thing, so we got um pages of comments. So we can really hone in on the things that were productive and were enjoyed or appreciated by the staff and. Kind of replicate that as we go forward for other early release or or um. P V days or even for just the the beginning for next year, so trying to be intentional with the direction um that we go in. And if you haven't seen the article, we made the front page, this was our guest speaker, the idea there was. Um that laughter is a great medicine, you all have heard the the. Common buzzword now of um. Uh social emotional learning, and it is a buzzword, but it is a real thing, but you'll find that a lot of your teachers. Do it anyway, teachers are by nature compassionate and by nature do want to know. What did you have for lunch last night or how did, how do you feel about what Johnny just said, like that's what teachers do. Our our point really was that it's also food service and it's also bus drivers. It's everybody, everybody who comes into um contact with our Millanocket children, so that was all part of that. It didn't hurt that we had a lot of giveaways and the, yeah, on the survey there, it's like, you know, what do you think about the giveaways? And I think that was like a ninety nine percent. Right, we had everything from fifty dollars to um a twelve packs of sodas to sweatshirts, so it was good. Um when the policy committee met, we were talking about looking at the uh buildings and use. Policies and um structure for rental like for what we would have for fees. Um we've landed on the fact that that's kind of a a bigger topic than sitting together in one meeting, so we do have. Um we're gonna have another meeting and and talk about what that. Structure might look like, we'll consider things like resident or non-resident, um profit or not for profit. So you'll be seeing that come across um the desk here um in the near future, by next month hopefully. Um in the meantime, we do have, uh Lupick has asked to use our building for three days to have some public meetings. And we have no reason to say no, they were here, took a look. Um we definitely have uh the accessibility that they need, the equipment and the size that they do need. So we will be allowing that in October, of course, what they will have for conversations will be separate from any of our opinions. Uh this is the use of our space, not to influence or to change anybody's opinions and we'll kind of be quite clear about that.
Very clearly.
Yes, very clear, exactly, agreed, um we had a couple of. Um scoreboards um put up and I was thinking Nick isn't here and nobody mentioned it, but. We've had two um generous donations of the scoreboards and. Uh Louis had talked about this rock and he said that our rock looks awesome, so like that's great. Um but those are wonderful assets to our um community um grounds here. Um also, we have Rhonda Casey is gonna speak just a second about um quarterly meetings that we've now um got with the town. Um starting as soon as tomorrow and also uh the audit process that's underway.
Yes, um. We have our audit is gonna be started uh October fourth and fifth. I've got a three-page document that I'm gonna gather up for the auditors, we've done a pre-audit and now they're gonna be working on our final audit. Um so that's gonna be, the next few weeks will be buried in gathering all that detail that we deal for them. And we are, like Shelley mentioned, we're gonna be doing our recordly financial meetings with the the town manager, Mary Alice. And Peter, I believe, right, uh my first one is tomorrow, so I'll get my feet ready, how that all works. Um and then the district did implement a new um two new programs. For dental insurance and vision insurance for our staff and we had eighteen people sign up for dental and nine sign up for vision plans. This, you know, it's a short notice, but we had quite a few quite interested in it actually, so. That's really going on that day.
Thank you, those are um safe self-paid plans, but at least they were offered to folks and. I thought that was a a great turnout to have eighteen and nine people to take advantage of those services. Retax dollars, yeah, yeah. Um in addition to that, I kind of started uh this whole report session talking about our district admin team. Um that team is very influential in how our entire system moves forward because it's kind of like a think tank. Um we go in there with, uh today we identified the purpose of our team to problem solve, share communications. Um before we're thinking, suggest and talk about things that would move our whole district forward in all of our different um departments. So that team will, you should be able to see as time goes on, the results of of all of those meetings as we um improve. The things are changed, um the things that are happening here at Sterns. With that said, the last thing I guess I'd like to say on mine is that as the year progresses, if there's something that you would like to hear about. And if you want to let me know, send me an email, give me a call, drop in, um there's certainly a lot of. Programs happening here at Sterns, in it granted, that um I I think you'd be interested in. And just like last year, from time to time, I'll ask individual staff members to come. One of these board meeting nights and present their program like we did a number of times last year, but if there happens to be one that you're interested in. If you want to let me know, we can kind of bubble that up to the top. That's it for me.
Would you tell me what L U B C is?
Land Use Planning Commission. It used to be lurk, but Lupick is kinder.
Yeah, that's what they say.
I know, I I hear you, I'm repeating what I heard.
I think if you had to do that Woltin Mining Project.
It it's public hearings and.
Yeah.
We do have a wonderful facility here, um and like I said, this is absent of anybody's opinion, they're asking to use our facility. Um and we've had a lot of conversations on it and we'll, you know, we'll make a dollar to put in our fund and should be all right.
So will they be using one of our gyms or the?
They'll be using, they'll be using the gym area, we're going to um be able to close the doors off to go into the. Public part of our school, so like even during their day sessions, they'll be coming and going right through those doors and not into where our students and staff are. Yep, and the public, they have two public meetings at night on a Monday and a Tuesday, and then they wrap up everything on Wednesday and will be done.
I just want to say how nice I think it is to have Rhonda and you meet with Peter and Mary Alice and keep that. That communication uh between the school and the town, I think it's gonna make. It's gonna pay big dividends, and I'm I'm very happy that's happening.
We had two of those meetings last year, um and. You're right, they help, there's a a lot of things that we of course don't understand the nuances of town business and um in the flip side of that is. Mary Alice said, you know, I I don't know what you do, I don't know how how that works because what we do for programs and. How we view our budget and our details is different than she needs to for the town, so you're right, it's a good sharing of information.
I had a question, one. I noticed this email with all kinds of answers, I think you answered Shelley with the charter process, there's a meeting tomorrow.
Yes. Yes.
Can you talk about a little bit?
Sure, so the town of Millenocket has a committee, I can only tell you what I think I know.
Okay.
The town of Millenocket has a charter committee, um and they have been having regular routine meetings. And then they got to the section on the school, so Matt Bragden, Councilor Bragden reached out to me and asked if we could have a meeting. So that we could go over what they had been doing up to that point. Um we all struggled to get together for a time, we landed on a time and then he got COVID. So our group, um Rhonda and um Kama and myself. Um and Tammy got together and went through and those were kind of our comments after we got done um the discussion. So I sent those over to Louis Pelletier, who's the chair of the committee, and now they've set up a meeting for tomorrow. Uh one Thursday at three, I believe, and we're going to actually be in person and go over those. Um before they have their next meeting, I think on the twentieth, where they're hoping to finalize some things, what we did. Is just ask questions, like what's your process for, how do you establish this, you know, like. We're not asking to intervene or make major changes, but how do you determine these things? Um and we don't have, we haven't had the conversation yet, so I don't know any of the answers.
And again, the more we communicate with the town, I think the better it is for the town, the better it is for the school.
Sure, absolutely.
Any other questions?
We got one last question, uh through the, through this superintendent to Rhonda. How are we doing on our money's back, our grants, have we got that straightened out?
It's still work in progress, I'm still picking away at it, I've got quite a few caught up. There are some stragglers that I need to need to do some work with, um but we are, I'm doing it three-month increments.
But we have made an improvement.
We've made an improvement, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing nothing, we have an executive session scheduled for six o'clock. So you can all adjourn, but we can just at this point take a break.
Can I throw in a couple more things? Okay, we have extra time, international update, okay, I always try to be fun, um so for um. So we have four international students here this year, um we have two from Spain and two from France and uh we have the senior from France. Um. Can't think about to say her name, she's not here yet. Marta? I can't.
Marta, Maria from Spain. I mean, French girl, I have, I don't think she's even here yet.
I don't think she is either, she just uh like she, we just finished up the contract over the weekend, so we're gonna have four, two from Spain, two from France. And with uh our Loren School, our Sterns Loren School, we, their school just started like a week ago and they have sixty students signed up. Um so just to do a little bit of comparisons, um. We with the Loren School, we charge a thousand dollars on a student, so that's a sixty thousand dollar automatically. And they, there's potential to sign up more because again, they just barely started. Um they had a uh like a welcome barbecue, um Chelsea had a welcome barbecue on Labor Day. And the kids in their host families um had some food, refreshments and also went out and did some uh kayak. That total bond, so. Um attended to, I I can't, I gave you the attendance, so uh the long and short of that is we're up fourteen. Up fourteen, so. We have a mentor training starting um on the twenty-sixth of September. Um if you remember last time, I shared with you that Heather Grissa had attended the state training. And she's now going to, she's put the offer up for people who are interested in the mentor training. So they're training with her, they get some contact hours for certification and it lasts there, then certified for five years to be a mentor. Now. Thank you. So everybody in the audience, thank you for attending and helping us out with information and sharing it with us. And uh we will shut down for him and wait for our executive session. Of which we may or may not have um a motion following.
Jesus thinks that I, I don't know.
Okay.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Love this highly basis. Good job.